Call the meeting to order. On your planning and zoning commission. Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Let's see. We have regular members, Bob Powell, so I don't think we have any alternates this season.
We do have all our regular.
Okay. Any additions or changes to the agenda, John?
I have none.
Okay, the minutes of February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three. Any corrections, modifications? I'm emotionally accepting this presentation.
A second.
And keep me discussion. Those in favor?
Oh, come on.
Okay. But you would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the agenda tonight? Thank you. So we have under unfinished business, a continuation of a public hearing, and I didn't want to lead into the record some specifics about rules and guidelines for holding the public hearing. I'm going to read this out loud. To ensure that tonight's public hearing is conducted fairly and in an orderly manner, I would like to let everyone know what the procedure will be for this evening. We recognize that a hybrid in-person and virtual meeting is an imperfect system. And I said you. Anybody there? Could you give everyone those?
I think everyone's given that.
Okay, thank you. We recognize that a hybrid in-person and virtual meeting is an imperfect system and ask everyone to be polite, respectful, and above all, patient as we go through this process. We will do everything we are able to do to ensure that everyone who wishes to view the proceedings or comment on the application are able to do so. The process that we will follow this evening will be as follows. In all cases, anyone who's testifying needs to be recognized by the chair before saying anything. The applicants will have the opportunity to provide any additional testimony or documentation or witnesses that they believe is relevant to their application. The attorney for the applicants may ask questions of their witnesses and experts, and they will be allowed to answer those questions. The commission members may ask the applicants and their witness any follow-up questions at this point. These should be questions and not statements or opinions or a discussion among the members of the commission. This will occur during deliberations after the public hearing has been closed. Once the applicant applicants and their attorney complete their presentation, any members of the public who wish to testify will be allowed to do so when they have been recognized by the chair. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to provide any testimony, documentation, or witnesses that they believe are relevant to the application. If the members of the public have witnesses or experts who are going to testify, a representative of those members of the public will have the opportunity to ask questions of those witnesses and experts, and they will be allowed to answer those questions. Additional members of the public who wish to speak will be allowed to do so upon being recognized by the chair. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom should ask to be recognized by using the raise hand function on Zoom. While the commission does not routinely impose time limits on public participation, we would ask that the statements be succinct and focus on the application at hand. Individuals who have already spoken once may speak again when recognized by the chair, but individuals who have not yet spoken will be given priority. The commission members may ask the members of the public and their witnesses any follow-up questions at this point. Again, these should be questions and not statements or opinions or a discussion among the members of the commission. That will occur during deliberations after the public hearing has been closed. If either the applicants or any members of the public have any follow-up questions for any witness or expert who has presented testimony, they may through the chair ask the witness or expert to answer those questions. Again, these should be specific questions rather than statements or discussions back and forth. Repetitive and argumentative questions and statements by any person participating in the hearing should be avoided and may be ruled out of order by the chair. All of the input from members of the public and the witnesses, the applicants will be provided a final opportunity to respond to that testimony. If at this point the commission believes that it has received all the information that it requires in order to proceed to deliberations, it may vote to close the public hearing. If the applicant or members of the public identify specific reasons why they believe that additional time or information is required in order to provide a fair hearing and their the hearing and therefore the hearing should not be closed, they may, upon being recognized by the chair, request that the hearing be continued to the next regular commission meeting specifying the reasons for such requests, such as a specific information that should be considered. All of that keeping in mind what the time limits statutorily are for public hearing lengths and the time we need to close them and other pertinent legal factors. Again, we thank you all for your patience with this process, and we're doing our best to ensure that this is a fair, open, and inclusive process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for your guidance. Appreciate it. That said, the applicant. Now, let me let me read into the record the name of the public hearing. I apologize. So this is a continuation of the public hearing for Big House LLC special permit application for an event and wedding facility at seventy-nine Cars Mill Road, map twenty, lot sixteen, per section twenty-one, point two, point three, fifty-two, point seven, point five, and sixty-two, point five of the zoning regulations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Commissioner, Henry Robinson, members of the public. My name is Mark Brugard. I represent the applicant. I would just like to say, you know, I think your remarks are well taken. From the applicant's point of view, I think we have been treated fairly. I think you, Mr. Chairman, and members of this commission have held to date a hearing that's been fair to both sides, and I expect that to continue. So I appreciate the time that all of you have spent listening to this. There's obviously some fairly different opinions on on this project. But, you know, I trust you'll listen to all of them, and at the end of the day, you'll make a decision. So we do appreciate the opportunity to present some additional testimony and some additional reports from Mr. Claude and from Mr. Tebow. Some are in response to some filings that were made at the last meeting shortly before the meeting, a couple of days where we really didn't have much of an opportunity to address them in a timely fashion. We appreciate. It's only been a couple of weeks, but we haven't been able to follow up on a couple of the issues that were raised at the last public here. So initially, we'll have Mr. Broad, who's been was a land surveyor, who's been testifying, will testify tonight about a couple of issues that we go into detail for. So at the end of the public hearing, I did submit a legal memo. I would like an opportunity at the end, maybe to just make a couple, you know, closing statements if we close the hearing tonight. If not, it would be whatever the hearing is called. Rather than that, and obviously I would reserve the right to question either our witnesses or if you're. So thanks again, Mr. Claude.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Greg Claude. I'm a licensed land surveyor and business partner at Killian Engineering Associates. Place of business at one fourteen Westcott Road in the Anderson, Connecticut. Just a quick refresher, we have the application before you plans that were submitted when the public hearing opened. We had reduced the number of guests for the wedding facility, reduced the parking, reduced the septic area, and we provided some street improvements, a removal of rocks, a relocation of the telephone pole, just to get you up to date where we were with that. We had submitted a statement of use. We have an approval letter that was submitted from the Eastern Highlands Health District. We had a letter from La Franvois Well Drilling attesting to water supply being sufficient that was submitted at the opening of the public hearing. We had a traffic report from F eight Hesketh and Associates. We had a one-hundred-year flood analysis report from Killian Engineering that was submitted. We had a letter from the previous owner, Sue Angelitis, attesting to flooding along the river. And then we had a sound analysis report from Acoustic Technologies Incorporated that was dated nine twenty-seven. Those were items that were submitted previously, so I just wanted to remind everybody where we stood on those things. Other correspondence that I had mentioned at the time of the opening of the public hearing, which has now been submitted, so it's new, it hasn't, it's been submitted electronically, but it hasn't been presented to the public. But one of them was a a letter from Frontier Communications in regards to the relocation of the telephone pole. So I had submitted this or talked about it at the public hearing, but I didn't have it with me that night. So it has been submitted as online. Basically, it's them telling the applicant that they will relocate the pole three feet back from its current location, placing a new pole for your wedding venue project, at which time it says, let me know when you break ground for the project. I will, for your wedding venue, at which time I will issue the project. And this from Drew Lombardi Lombardi, who's telecommunications specialist with Frontier. And this was dated November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. So that was submitted electronically and is online, so that was something new. Other new items that have happened since we opened the public hearing, the inland weapons commission has voted to accept the agent approval on February sixth. So P and Z needed to have that happen before they could act on it. So we just wanted to let you know that that had happened. Other new items that were submitted for tonight is a sound report for the low-level acoustic music. We had addressed the music. The original report addressed all the music that's playing inside with all the design recommendations from the sound expert. We also went out on February twenty-fourth. Norman Tebow and myself and the acoustic technology Carl, and we had a we played guitars and we played low-level background music by a boombox. So we have some information to preside on that tonight. I'll be presenting that in a moment. And then we have a response letter from Acoustic Technologies that was submitted electronically dated two twenty-five, twenty-three. That's regarding the Fuston O'Neal comments. And then we also have a Valbridge appraisal report dated three nine twenty-two-three. That's in response to the appraisal comments or appraisal reports that were submitted last month. And then the last item that we have that's news, we have a report from Michael Murphy, who is a planning consultant. He's responding to the plan of conservation development and how this application meets it. So we'll be reviewing that with you. So those are the new items that we're doing. The first one that I will kind of summarize for you is the Valbridge real estate report. And this again was submitted last Thursday. It's the Valbridge Property Advisors appraisal review regarding the big White House LLC. And basically, it says, Dear Mr. Gates, at your request, I have reviewed the above referenced report, which purports to estimate the impact of the proposed wedding facility at seventy-nine Cars Mill Road, Columbia, Connecticut, on neighboring residential property values. Mr. Lamonti focuses on the before and after values, values which he estimates for three residential properties, eighty-two Cars Mill, nine Scully's Drive, and four Baker Hill Road, all of which are relatively proximate to the proposed facility. The reader should be aware that this report should be considered a decktop report of Mr. Lamonti's report only. I have not expected inspected any of the properties outlined in his report. I do, however, have extensive experience in studying the impact of proposed developments on surrounding residential properties. Most recently, we undertook an assignment to analyze the impact of a higher and large mixed-use development in central Connecticut. The neighbors were concerned that traffic noise and congestion would negatively impact their home values. As with the present situation, the development wasn't built, so there was no impact on this subject site to analyze. We had to look at past developments that came to fruition and look to surrounding residential values before and after. This is the best way to measure impact on values. There were some paired scales, paired sales that occurred before and after the development came to fruition of that same property, which are ideal, are the ideal. However, the majority of the sales were similar property size and quality of construction that were analyzed. What we found in the four development studies where there was no impact on value that occurred on the surrounding residential properties. The rate of the property values increased, I'm sorry, the rate of the property value increase was no less in the immediate surrounding area, typically a half-mile radius than in other areas of the same town. And then he goes on to review the Lamonti appraisal. And he says, I have many concerns about Mr. Lamonti's work product. I will primary primarily focus on the big picture concerns and not on the minor issues. I may have, however, I will point out that Mr. Lamonti states his report complies with current USPAP standards. Yet he identifies his report as a complete appraisal summary report. This is dated terminology that was done away with approximately ten years ago. The identification of the report as such is technical violation of USPAP standards. The subject, if approved and developed, will be located on forty-one point three-three acres, mostly surrounded by the Ten Mile River. Mr. Lamonti correctly states this in his rural, that this is a rural neighborhood. The three properties Mr. Lamonti valued on a before and after basis were relatively proximate to the subject, the closest being five hundred and thirty-five feet from the proposed new building. The other other properties were greater distance. It should be noted that the new structure will be sixty feet lower than Carsville Road street grade. There is also a dense vegetation of trees, particularly along the Ten Mile River that produce further buffering from any noise that might be there or might be generated. One of the many problems that I note with Mr. Lamonti's report is that it makes numerous and often repeated blanket statements with absolutely no evidence to support them other than his opinion. An example is shown below, and he regards to a portion of his report. Mr. Lamonti presumes that all buyers base their decision in large part on location and neighborhood composition and that a wedding facility would be destructive to the neighborhood. He presents no evidence to support this assertion. Mr. Lamonti further asserts that noise will be an issue, yet my understanding is that outdoor activities and the thus the noise will have time limitations. Furthermore, the new structure, which will house the events, will be buffered by the Ten Mile River and surrounding trees and vegetation. Mr. Lamonti frequently repeats the same claim throughout the report that the wedding facility will create traffic, noise, and light pollution. While this will undoubtedly create more traffic periodically during event times, most of his claims have no associated support with actual evidence. They are just unsupported claims. And this is the last portion of his report here. Mr. Lamonti claims that each of the three residential properties will suffer between thirty to thirty-five percent diminution in value caused by the development of the subject wedding facility. An example of the non-fact-based assertion is followed, and he just quotes part of his report there. Mr. Lamonti indicates above that his adjustments are of his own and based upon his forty-seven years of experience. While his time in the business is quite lengthy, he is short on his facts to support his adjustments other than because this is what he believes will happen. His final adjustments from before values and summaries are in the below charts taken from his report. And then he just has the charts based on his report. And then the last thing is its certification is Patrick A. Lamp, Lamp, I'm sorry, who is the owner of the end. He just has his statements and facts there. So that's his report that was submitted last week. And then the next report that I was going to go over is our report from Michael Murphy, who is a planner and development consultant, and it's dated March eighth, twenty-twenty-three. On the subject is the application of Big White House LLC consistency with the twenty-sixteen Columbia P O C D. Purpose of this report is the planner has been requested by your office to review application materials provided to the town of Columbia and an opinion regarding the proposal's consistency with the town's twenty-sixteen plan of development. Objectives, recommendation, and goals. While references references to various development issues and characteristics may be added to this report to provide additional perspective, this document is not intended to focus on specific aspects of conformance with zoning regulations. The history, a review of the commission's history with section fifty-seven, fifty-two point seven point five, which authorizes event slash wedding venues by special permit in the RA zone in town, indicates that this provision was made effective on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. According to the record, the commission held multiple public hearings and deliberated very carefully before adopting this regulation amendment. Much of the discussion focused on addressing the concerns of potential residents who might be affected while not wanting to overly limit this type of business operation. This was also discussion about remaining somewhat consistent with the farm winery operations as they relate to the community. Ultimately, the commission made key amendments to address noise, traffic, and other potential impacts to the product to protect the community. Issue, the subject use is now permitted. You is now permitted use by the zoning regulations, subject to the requirements and conditions authorized in section fifty-two, seven, five of the zoning regulations. The applicant must meet the special permit criteria as well. Section fifty-two, four, A of the Columbia zoning regulations is the first criteria of the special permit test and associated with the plan of conservation development. It reads as follows. A plan of conservation and development, whether the proposed use or activity is in accordance with the facility's achievement of one or more of the goals, one or more of the goals, objectives for policies and recommendations of the Columbia Plan of Conservation and Development. This report provides analysis regarding the proposal's consistency and conformance with the town Columbia Plan of Development. Consistency with the plan of development. He's going to go into describe his issues with this. The twenty-sixteen plan of conservation and development provides a vision for the town's future along with specific strategies and implementation plan for achieving that vision. That vision is explained throughout policies that apply to many aspects of development. It also tries to address and direct long-term changes that will occur within the town over the coming years as it provides guidance for short-term decision-making on land use applications and municipal improvements. An analysis of the policy goals and objectives that apply to this particular application follows. National resources, natural resources and conservation goals. The P O C D calls for protecting the town's natural and cultural resources for future. The application has proposed development outside of weapon soils and surface waters with measures that minimize disturbance of the property or on key resources. Low-impact development practices have been utilized in the design to meet the P O C D's natural resource goals. They prevent erosion and minimize stormwater generation, which should prevent erosion and resource contamination. The base flood elevation at the site have also been carefully modeled, and the development should be any applicable flood protection regulations in place. Community development goals. The site is located in an area designated for future potential development in the plan. The P O C D calls for development to take place in a sensitive manner whereby future development meets the needs of residents and preserves the rural character of Columbia as envisioned in the P O C D. This proposal clearly meets this policy. In my opinion, given the physical layout of the plan to place the new facility within existing, within the existing compound in a non-forested area between two carriage house slash garage buildings to balance conservation and development goals. This is a much preferred over development of an event wedding facility or a low-density sub or a low-density subdivision of single-family homes on a large track of prime farmland soils at the front of the property near Cars Mill Road. The proposed use of the event facility at the rear of the property is remote to any butters, and with proper measures to address the conditions of the regulations will maintain the rural character of the site and this area. Business and economic development goals. The P O C D discusses the need for existing businesses to grow and for new businesses to find opportunities in Columbia. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been been careful about what types of enterprises to allow in the residential agricultural zone. In this regard, the comprehensive plan of zoning also allows embedded breakfast establishments, farmers' markets, farm wineries, equestrian centers, and daycare operations in the RA zone with approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The recent adoption of the regulations to allow event wedding venues as a limited enterprise in a zone was supported by the commission, and the use complements this array of other uses, in my opinion, when implemented as proposed. And I believe this is his last section, but it's the agricultural goal. A focus on the P O C D was to continue to support existing agricultural businesses and encourage their expansion and welcome new agriculture. The proposal, through the careful planning and location of the facility and development portion of the site, will support the existing agricultural use and allow fields to remain for both cunning and bailing of hay seasonally, while also maintaining blueberry bushes on the site. And I apologize, you did have some more sections here. Recreational development goals. The P O C D addresses the need to provide a variety of outdoor and indoor recreational and social activities for people of all ages and abilities. One weakness of the town of Columbia cited in the plan was that it has few community events. It also notes that privately owned land for events in the form of social activities are also important. In addition, the plan notes that diversifying social activities to address needs not currently met may benefit. Also, the act, the applicant's proposal provides the town with opportunities to promote interpersonal communications and community gathering activities while promoting quality development. And the last, I'll read his summary. Based on the detailed review of all plans, reports, and information relating to this application, including a detailed field investigation and survey of the area, its land use pattern, and its road system, it is my professional opinion that the project meets all of the goals and objectives of the twenty-sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development cited above. In addition, this planner believes the project also meets overall plan philosophy goals of the P O C D and will, one, protect the Columbia residents' value while the town continues to grow, two, encourage development that is capable or compatible with the town's rural character, and three, protect natural and cultural resources for future generations. And also included with this, he has his qualification and resident paperwork. So he, he knows that in his opinion, it does meet the the plan of conservation. And then the last item that I'm going to do, which will be very brief, is kind of my closing items that I wanted to mention to the commission, was that the proposed use is a minimal impact. The proposed use will be occurring on a forty-one acre site. Use location is one thousand and fifty feet from the road and seventy feet lower than the road. It will not be visible or heard from the board from the road based on an expert's report provided to the commission. The plan has been designed in accordance with section fifty-two point seven five of the zoning regulations for event facility. Plans meet the minimum separation distances to residents. Keep in mind, other than two homes, all of the other residences in this area are one thousand feet or more. Most are two thousand feet and more. Some are five thousand feet more. People that are here talking about this application are that far away and are shown on the overall map, which is the map that I had there. We went over all the distances at the first public hearing that showed how far we are away from the residences with our thing. This middle impact use is far removed from the neighboring houses. This minimal impact use will happen no more than fifteen times a year and no more than once per weekend. That being said, at five hours per event times fifteen times a year, that's seventy-five hours in a year, that equals less than one percent of your year's time of a minimal impact use on the property in a year's time. That means that ninety-nine point two percent of the time in a year, this middle impact isn't even happening. And ninety-nine point two percent of the time, the site remains the same, and the roads will remain the same. We presented a scenario that the site were subdivided into lots. That would equal more homes, more traffic, and more noise. All of that, if we're approved, would happen one hundred percent of the time. So I just wanted to note that. I'm now going to turn it over to Norman Tebow from Killian Engineering. So I just wanted to note that. I'm now gonna turn it over to Norman Tebow uh from Killian, Michigan. So who's going to review uh flood information and sound reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. For the record, my name is Norman Tebow. I'm a partner at Killian Engineering Associates, one fourteen Westcott Road in Killian, Connecticut. Uh I'm a licensed professional engineer. Um um based upon a request uh by the commission, I did take a look at. On the question regarding um flooding on, on the lot, uh essentially the, the one hundred year flood. Uh essentially, what we're able to do here on. Uh FEMA actually, a- as you, as you are aware, uh New London County, right across the river, there is a flood study. Uh that's been published. It was originally published in two thousand and eleven. Uh it was updated in two thousand and thirteen. Um there is no published um flood report uh for our property and, and there aren't any in Columbia. Uh and in fact, the only, the only place along the ten mile river in Columbia. That shows any kind of flood at all is right at the confluence with the Willamantic River, which is probably. Uh associated uh with a basically um almost like a backflow condition from the river itself. Um so, so what I did is I took the numbers that, that FEMA actually um had published. Uh for uh New London County. Um and uh there, there were two separate ones of the ten mile river. I had previously provided a, an analysis of the ten mile river upstream of the confluence of Gifford Brook. Which is six point oh nine eight uh square miles, uh which, and it produces a, a peak flow of fifteen hundred C F S. Um uh as a result of um a comment uh by um uh the opposition. That felt as though I should have uh chosen uh the, the next point up, which is actually the confluence with the Willamantic River. I redid the drainage computations based on that. I, I believe it's, it's uh. It's very conservative in nature because obviously we are not at the Willamantic River. Uh and there is, uh there's a substantial watershed past our site. Uh nonetheless, I utilize uh that number, which is uh seventeen square miles. Uh and uh three thousand C F S would be the peak flow from a one hundred year uh storm. Uh that, that seventeen acres uh translates to ten thousand eight hundred and seventy. Uh I'm sorry, seventeen square miles translates to ten thousand eight hundred and seventy acres. So with that, uh with those numbers, what I'm able to do is, is model. Uh cross-sections of the stream throughout the site. I took five separate spots along the stream where I generated cross-sections. Uh we've got the, the cross-section of the channel. We've got the slope of the channel. I'm able to essentially take these numbers, this three thousand C F S. Plug them into my program and analyze the channel based upon the numbers that are actually published uh by FEMA. So I'm not sure how well you can see it here. Uh but there's a heavy dotted line that we show throughout the site. Um which, uh which is what I'm coming up with. For instance, the, the first section here. I'm coming up with a flood elevation of uh two seventy-eight, twenty-two. Uh section two R, two seventy-five, thirteen. Section three, two seventy-three, ninety-four. Section four, two seventy-two point five, and then section five. Uh two seventy-one, eighty-eight. Now, as you can see, yeah, this, the, the floodwaters do come up into the yard. And which really does correlate with what the, the previous owner of the property had told us. Uh we do have a letter that we submitted for the record. Um uh that um uh the previous, that uh Ms. Angelita submitted. And uh in her testimony in her letter, she states very specifically that there were times when the floodwaters. Came up on the lawn toward their house. Um uh the, the computations that I have done, I really demonstrate that. They really seem to solidify what she had told us. Uh as far as the flood across the river, um I did, I did speak to a gentleman. Uh named Marshall Wilson uh from FEMA and uh, and he in turn uh. Uh pointed me in the direction of Diane Ifcovic, the state of Connecticut NFIP Coordinator. On both of these people indicated to me that uh we cannot simply just. Um extend the flood elevation from, from another flood study across our property. It, it just doesn't work that way. Um and uh these things need to be analyzed uh individually. So uh with regard to a flood study being done off of this side of the river. Um I was informed uh by uh Ms. Uh. Uh Ifcovic, I want to pronounce your name correctly, that uh there is a, a work map session. That will be um uh put together at some point this year uh by members of, of FEMA. And basically what a work map session does, it takes a very um general sort of broad-brust look. Uh at, at the floodplain at that point. And uh they take these working maps and they have meetings with the engineers uh and uh the NF, NFIP coordinators. Uh and at that point, then the, the, the maps are distributed uh to the towns and to the municipalities for, for review. Um she did say that these work maps are not legally binding, number one. Uh secondly, uh the work map is a, is a long way from an approved um flood study. So um if, if it goes anything like what we've been promised in uh on. In Wyndham County uh for the past three-plus years. Um and we're still waiting on that. We've been told. We've been told for three years it's going to come out and uh we haven't seen it. So. Um I, you know, I stand by my computations. My background is in hydrology and water resource engineering. Uh this is a program, I think there was also a question of whether or not the HydroCAD uh T R twenty program was acceptable. Uh to do the analysis here. I have been using this program for more than twenty years uh for submissions to FEMA. Um usually two to three times a year. Uh we do uh LOMAs, which are letters of map amendment, uh where we do a watershed study. And try to remove uh either structures or properties uh from published floodplains. And um um I can say uh for the record that I cannot recall one that we've had denied. Uh we, we, we have had some where we've done the analysis. And uh and then told the client, you're still going to be in the flood. We may as not even, we may as well not even submit because. Um it, it's gonna come back and they're not going to remove your structure. These are typically done uh for the purposes of, of insurance. People who are um designated to be in, in a, in a floodplain or within a, in a floodway. Uh they, they typically have to pay uh an insurance policy uh for flooding. And um we do these LOMAs, these letters of map amendments uh in order to have them removed. So they can, they don't have to pay uh the flood insurance, which could get pretty pricey depending upon what the property is. Uh they typically, you know, thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars a year and up uh for, for flood insurance. Even though, you know, uh people, they have been, the last one we did in Killian. Uh the woman who lives there, it was the house she grew up in. It was her parents' house. Uh there's, there's over sixty years of history there uh with, with no um history of flooding ever at this house. So. Um you know, we did the analysis. Uh she was pretty close to a dam with a spillway that we were able to utilize. And determine what the flood elevation was. We had to remove from the flood. Uh so. Uh that being said, uh I would like to move on uh to the uh acoustical uh study. But as you know, uh we had a, a study done by Mr. Carl Casio. Uh who's the pre, the president of Acoustic, Acoustical Technologies Inc. Um uh Mr. Casio has over thirty years experience as a sound engineer, including over twenty years with the U S Navy. Uh so um he is um very experienced and uh. Um very technical uh as well. So a lot of times trying to get uh some information out of him. That um uh is, is a little less than technical, that the layman may understand, uh is a little difficult. But uh that being said, uh in a follow-up to his uh uh report that he did initially. Uh there were some questions uh regarding the, on the background music, the low-level background music um uh for ceremonies. And um uh I think it was always our belief or our understanding that. Uh this would, the, the low-level background music would be allowable or would be um tolerated at the property boundary. But there was also, I, I guess there's enough of a question to it whether or not um the regulations do allow that, that we had Mr. Casio out there. Uh um and we did uh uh two different studies, uh two different um. Uh sound tests, uh one uh playing guitar uh in the gazebo area. Uh and secondly, uh playing a boombox with some ceremony music. We produced, uh we gave you that um, that report, we provided it. It was um. Uh originally produced by Mr. Casio in uh uh February twenty-seventh, uh two thousand and two-three. And uh essentially, um what he did was he determined uh what the background uh levels were. And then he projected uh what uh actually measured and projected um uh the levels that we would expect from the guitar and the boombox. Oddly enough, the guitar was louder than the boombox projected were. Uh but uh essentially what he determined. That um uh from the gazebo, ten, ten yards from the river. Uh he was, he was measuring uh forty-five point two to forty, forty-three um uh decibels. Uh and at ten yards, the music uh from the, from the gazebo was about, about two decibels higher. Than the background noise in the area. As he moved closer to the river, closer to the boundary. Um there was actually more background noise as a result of the river flowing. And um what he found there, that the ambient background noise there uh was somewhere around fifty-two decibels. And uh so it, the, the measurement of the forty-three to forty-five decibels from the music. Um it was uh Mr. Um Casio's uh conclusion. And that the music at the wedding ceremony at the gazebo would not be heard at the nearby property lines. Because the background noise from the river is more than ten decibels higher than the music noise at the boundary. Uh I may say that while this music was playing, uh we did uh walk uh to that area as well. As well as um areas along the lawn where the, where the people would be seated for the ceremonies. And it's very difficult to hear the music. I, I think if you uh on the lawn, if you, if you really kind of focused on it. Uh you, you could pick on a little bit of the music in the background. And that was about um, that was about thirty yards uh to the music. Uh but you also have to understand that that was on the property itself. Um that was the, the, the property line in that direction is quite distant um uh from the gazebo. When we, when uh we measured the uh, excuse me, when we measured the um. Uh the music at the river and toward the closest property line, um it was, it was not um audible. At that point, uh the, the background uh music, uh just a little bit of wind through the trees and the, and the sound of the water running and so forth. Um uh was louder uh than the music that was piped as a result of the ceremony. So uh as I said, it is uh Mr. Casio's opinion that um the music would not be heard. At the property line as, as a result of that. Uh secondly, um there was a uh, a, a sound report uh that, that was um. Put forth by Fussin O'Neil. Uh they reviewed Mr. Casio's report and they had some comments to it. And I, I basically like to go through um the comments by Fussin O'Neil and the responses by Mr. Casio. So uh discovery uh. Number one, in the, in the, in the, the title or the, the heading of this and Fussin O'Neil report is misrepresentation of sound survey data. Next report unreliable. Um it says, "The town of Columbia has no, no such provisions for the use of, of statistical values as previously described." And the noise specification established by the Columbia ordinance requires music shall not be audible beyond the property boundary. The following issues are noted within the report. It says the, uh it says table five lists fourteen different locations that were used for the basis of noise level measurements. Ten of the fourteen measurements were not collected at the property boundary. Uh two measurements are also listed for seventy-nine Cars Mill Road, but different background noise levels are listed. So there's an error with the noise data. And uh there's also a little illustration of where these, uh these were taken. So, uh Mr. Casio's response to that says the Fussin O'Neil uh letter mentions only one point criteria, it shall not be audible. This is taken from the zoning regulations. Uh item one, the measurements were taken to gather design information. Not to show that the music was audible at the property line. The noise test after the venue was, would, was built would do that. So the purpose originally of Mr. Casio's report was to give us parameters by which to design by. So he, he makes some very specific recommendations in his report about, about soundproofing. Uh and he, he lists um manufacturers of different soundproofing elements such as insulation. Uh such as windows and doors and so forth. Uh he also says that um. The width by, by uh incorporating his recommendations into the design. Uh we could achieve anywhere from forty-two to sixty-five decibels of attenuation. Uh depending upon how much insulation, how much, how many layers of insulation, what goes in between the studs. How many layers of glass, things of that nature. So. Uh the intention of his original report was to give us design guidelines so that we could meet. The town's uh sound requirements for this type of facility. Um item number two, it says uh. And he talks about the, the strap, the, the traffic, the sound level data, such as the time of day, the duration of sound sampling. Um uh with the, with the, what was the duration of the data collection? Two minutes or four hours was the sound level data collected eleven A M or eight P M? Since this information is missing, the report is incomplete. Uh Mr. Casio responds, "The measurements were taken during the day when all local traffic. Was absent and represent the lowest L ninety backgrounds expected during operation of the venue at any time." Um I, I mean, I don't think you want to take uh background measurements when you, during rush hour. When you've got car after car after car coming by. Obviously, you're not going to hear music a thousand feet away if you've got cars coming by you. Um Mr. Casio took these readings during uh the low level of, of, of traffic. And uh what he felt as though were the lowest um uh volume levels uh available during those times. Uh number three, uh page four, the acoustic report suggests that an average sound value of thirty decibels at the property boundary. Should be reasonable and use as an acceptable level of music since it's slightly below the average background level. Uh this is not in conformance with the ordinance. Um Mr. Casio's response to that says, "The ordinance does not specify a noise level, so engineering judgment. Is needed to estimate and develop a set of noise requirements for the design." Uh discovery number two, uh the Fussin O'Neil report says that incomplete sound level determination that gates any validity to conclusion made within the report. And the report, it talks about the effects of inter, uh in, infrasound. Uh can cause structures to vibrate from low-frequency airborne noise coupling with building or structures at very low frequencies. The sound wave is very large and it collides with structures. It causes motion to be impaired, uh quote-unquote vibration. And the sound energy easily transmitted through the walls and windows. This can have a dramatic impact upon residential communities. This deep-frequency tones. And impulsive noise are probably some of the most annoying elements of intrusive noise. Although the overall A-weighted sound level may be low and meet community noise requirements, discrete frequency tones referred to as a prominent discrete tone. By Connecticut D E E P uh can still be considered a youth, a nuisance. Um Mr. Casio says um uh. It is a, Fussin O'Neil mentions other requirements of the Connecticut Noise Ordinance, which I just reviewed. Um it says, "A T I is aware of these requirements and will address them in the design." Uh discovery number three, uh comparison to workplace noise standard applies in applicable noise standard to proposed facility. The report references occupational noise standard promulgated by the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA. OSHA regulation applies to worker safety and has no bearing or applicability to the sound level measurement process or special permit application. Mr. Casio says that the, the, the letter mentions workplace safety. The ATA report was intended to address the noise issues the wedding venue would have to meet, not just not audible at the boundary requirement. So, he, he does mention a, a number of different issues. But once again, the intention of the original report was to give us some design parameters, which we will follow when the, the building is actually designed. And then, uh, the discovery number four, mentioning the lack of building plans. Once again, you know, to, I, I think to actually design the building at this point is it, it's not, it, it's certainly not a prudent alternative at this point. A full design building plans will cost thousands and thousands of dollars for something that, you know, which we certainly hope will be approved by this commission. But at this juncture, there, there really is no reason to actually have a full set of building design plans. And once again, in the closing comments from the Fussin O'Neil report, says noise measurements were heavily influenced by the sound of about twelve people talking. That was on page seven of the report. While the ordinance doesn't specifically regulate other noise associated with people talking, engines, car alarms, horns, or other noise associated with celebratory congregations, all of these sounds are likely to be much greater in the background noise of the quiet residential community. And once again, Mr. Casio says the ATI report was intended to provide noise control information necessary to develop, to develop detailed building plans. I, that is all I have at this point. If you have any, any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions?
I think that's all we have initially.
Just a point of order, that we do have a fire marshal here. Are you, are we good with numbers?
Yeah, so that's all we have at this time.
Thank you very much.
Some time at the end.
Any, any questions from the commission?
I just wanted that there are physical copies of those materials that the applicant team mentioned on the corner of the table there, near where Justin is and where the tripod is. The updated site plans are the paper papers and everything else that Mr. Claude and Mr. Tebow were quoted from should be in that packet next to it. It is also available to be viewed on the town website.
With that, I'm gonna open this up.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Rick? I would like to make a motion that we not accept this application on the grounds that it is not substantially different from the previously rejected application.
You, you're making that motion now?
Yes, I am. We've, we've heard the entire testimony and I, I, I feel that it is not substantially different than the previous rejected application.
We, I was hoping that we would wait till all testimony was in.
Don't we need to close the public hearing question?
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that would be after the testimony has been received, including the the legal presentation that Attorney Boulard said he was going to wait to give.
I, I thought Attorney Boulard said he was finished with his testimony.
I said it was finished for now and obviously at the beginning of my presentation, I still reserve the right to make, you know, some closing comments. I'm happy to do that. Yeah, and I did submit the memo which is available, I think, put on the, on the link. I do want to make some further comments on that. I thought it, it obviously would be more appropriate at the end rather than in the middle.
I, I would agree, Bob. So, at this point, we have a public hearing open, so to make a motion like that, we would need to have closed a public hearing. I think we had a consensus of the commission that asked everyone to weigh in that we weren't going to make any decision about the relative difference of this, this application versus the prior application until we heard all testimony. We weren't going to act on any of that.
I, I'm sorry, I thought I heard Attorney Boulard say he was finished.
Well, he's, he was finished for now and he did submit a memorandum highlighting the differences in this application with the other one. But I was gonna wait to weigh in on any of the public testimony before we make a decision on anything.
I mean, and, and there may be public testimony that's relevant to that question.
Okay, fine. I'll, I'll, I, I withdraw my motion and I'll wait later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is something that we, we want to address at some point. That said, so I'm gonna open this up to public, absent anything from the commission, I'm gonna open this up to testimony and questions. First up. Again, Ms. Briggs.
Chair Briggs, sixty one Johnson, revised site plans were submitted, but there wasn't any explanation of what the changes were. Could I ask you, Chairman, what were they gonna, the only change that I saw is the flood, the hundred year flood line has moved. Is there any other change to the draft?
I, I will.
That could be asked through to them.
Yes. You know, I would hope that we could group, make this a more efficient process. But if the applicant would like to address that now, great. If we go back and forth continuously, we'll be here for three or four more sessions over six or eight more hours, I would think.
I can answer that very quickly.
Okay.
That is correct. It's just a floodline. That was it.
Okay. Briggs, you still have the floor if you would like it. Are you all set?
For a second, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay. We're, we're trying to get all testimony in, in an efficient way, if possible. But we want everything heard. Is it some, you, you do have something?
If, if I may. So, if I'm to understand, again, this is a question directed back to Mr. Tebow. There was a flood, a hundred year flood study submitted in September twenty twenty two. It showed the gotta get it if I can. As I understand it, the old, in September twenty twenty two, a hundred year flood line was like along here. And it conveniently went outside the gazebo. Now, back in the application that you guys voted against this summer, this past summer, they indicated there was no flood zone. Now, you made a finding that it was in fact, there is some type of flood zone as not clearly delineated. In September, they had a line here. Now, the flood line actually includes part of the wedding venue, even by their own calculations. And so, to me, that's a huge issue. Is now part of the wedding venue, that's an active part of it, is in the hundred year flood zone. And you're gonna hear from somebody who has emptied furniture out of that house because it flooded. Cause he helped move the furniture. This is not meant for development. It shouldn't be used for a commercial activity that's gonna flood it. And it does flood. So, Mr. Tebow says he stands by his report, one, which report? The one from this summer where there was no flood zone, the one in September that says there's a limited flood zone, or now, well, now there's a, yeah, there is. He mentions that it's used software. Well, I submitted you the list that FEMA allows. Just because FEMA let it get by doesn't mean that you shouldn't use what you're required to use. FEMA says use the contiguous data. So, he's picked something downstream, which made it a little better because at least the angle of the water is at least at an angle, whereas their original calculation, they were using a flat stretch by Gifford Brook in Lebanon, over two miles away. So, they're, they're playing with the data. And I would request that the commission consider getting their own engineer to look at this data. You, you're relying on laypeople. I, I have some construction background. I got, you know, people I can run this past. But quite frankly, I can't afford to go out and hire an engineer. So I, I would suggest that, that the commission consider as part of this public hearing, commissioning somebody to actually look at this. You've had two totally different reports submitted by the applicant now in this process. And I don't know how you can consider either of them reliable. So, with respect to the flood information, I mean, by their own admission, the gazebo, nearly the parking area, this is now a pencil into the, into that peninsula, that's not in the flood zone. Whereas before, at least they were saying most of it wasn't in the flood zone. Now, most of it is. That's a huge change. And that's a negative change from their prior application. So they're actually admitting this one is worse with respect to the flood level. That was one of the reasons you voted to deny this application. And since they haven't eliminated this issue, that application should fail on that reason alone. So, that's my comments with respect to the flood.
Can we get all your comments at once so that we can deal with them?
I, I can't do that because I have, we have witnesses that we were gonna present, so I can't do it that way. Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to respond to what they presented that I can do without a witness.
Mr. Tebow, would you like to respond to that or?
I think, I think I explained that during my presentation. That we, we initially did the analysis on, on the smaller watershed. That was terminated prior to this site. This, this particular site is kind of in between the two points that, that FEMA has analyzed. There, there are two points, so we're not at either of them. So, when I did the second analysis, I took the more conservative approach. I, I took the watershed that was associated with all the way down to the confluence with the Willimantic River. I think it's a very conservative approach. It's seventeen square miles, over ten thousand acres. And by analyzing that more conservative, taking that more conservative approach, that more conservative method, obviously, the, the flood line shifted. So.
What's the relative difference in elevation of the flood line? Based on your current, those current calculations versus what you thought it to be previously? And also, could you outline on the property where that flood line occurs?
Where the current flood line occurs?
Well, the one based on your most recent analysis.
It's on the, that's, that's it shown on the plan right there.
Would help if you highlight it, cause I, I really can't discern that from this just.
Mr. Chairman? It's John. Would it be useful to bring up, for, for me to bring up the, the relevant map on the screen as well?
I don't know that the applicant could highlight on that map where that gradation is. Yeah, this is very helpful.
Yeah, most of the people in the room couldn't see it on the screen.
That help, that help you? Yeah, thank you. And the relative difference in elevation between what you just outlined and what the prior analysis? Is, is it an absolute elevation or does it change over the gradient?
All right, so. About three quarters of foot on the first one. About the same on the second, just about three quarters of foot. On this one, we have about, about a foot, a little over a foot. And on the third one. Well, about a foot and a half on, on the turn over here. To make sense because that's where the, that's where the, where the, where the water, where the slope of the, of the channel is steeper. You know, a little less of an increase. It's flatter over here, so we have a little bit more. And then the last one. About a foot and a half there as well.
Are, are these structures within the one hundred year flood plain?
The, we have the gazebo within the one hundred year flood plain, which is, you know, basically a, sitting on a, on a concrete slab. It's not, it's a, it is a structure of sorts.
So, so the current house and, and carriage house and the proposed new structure?
Are not.
And what's the difference in elevation as you get closer to the house? How many feet above the flood plain are each of those three structures?
The house, the finished floor in the house is at two seventy eight two, and we've got, we've got two seventy three ninety four, two seventy two five, two seventy one eighty eight. So, the, the, the first floor elevation of the house is substantially higher. The garage, sorry, we do not have a, a finished floor in the garage, but I believe it's somewhere around two seventy six or so, so we're a couple of feet higher. And the proposed wedding venue is about a half a foot higher than the flood in that area. We got, we have it, we have it placed there. I mean, that's, that's certainly adjustable if we, if need be. But we're showing it as, at that, that's what the elevation that we're showing it at right now, approximately a half a foot higher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? I'm opening this up to the public again. Any comments or questions from members of the public?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mark Starpretense, please five. I have a few comments today. So, at July twenty seven, two thousand and twenty two, planning zoning commission meeting, the application for the wedding event facility, so the nine car was denied by the commission. The planning zoning commission listed numerous reasons why the applicant did not satisfy each of the requirements of section fifty one three of the site plan section, of zoning regulations. And the application did not satisfy each of the requirements of section fifty two four, the special permit section of the zoning applications. Right, the application is, the applicant has made some revisions in late submission. However, these revisions fall far short of addressing all the concerns that were expressed by the commission in their first denial. Most of the concerns, the trust has commissioned, are actually out of control of the applicant and can never fully be corrected. So, another thing I want to point out, this was a question of the board last meeting. We were questioned, you know, why are we specifically opposing a wedding venue at seventy nine car sale? And so first, first concern is our, our hours of operation, right? Many years ago, I was actually a wedding photographer, so I know from experience, typically weddings are held on weekends, holidays, with the hours of operations going late into the evening, okay? Okay. And addressing the fifteen events allowed per the regulation, in two thousand nineteen, the Connecticut Examiner published an article, Wedding Seasons in Southeastern Connecticut. The article stated that May and June are well known as wedding months, but fall weddings have become increasingly popular across the United States, particularly in Connecticut. So when you spread those fifteen events across those weekends of May, June, September, and October, these are the months that the weather is such that winters are left open and people are enjoying their time in their yards. Okay. But most importantly is the concern of having been a venue in in a residential neighborhood of impaired driving, driving anywhere from a mile to two miles to state roads to any of the state roads. Okay. And they're they're driving over unlit, narrow, winding residential roads to the near state road. And in a previous submission that I submitted to the commission, I cited a two thousand fifteen British study, my letter, that indicated those surveyed, one in ten residents, yes, which would be ten percent, stated that they had driven home when they felt they could not be over the limit, that was that you would be over the limit. And coincidentally, on the day of the last planning of zoning commission meeting, the Connecticut State Transportation Commissioner asked lawmakers to take a drastic step, cutting the legal blood outfall content level by almost half from point eight, point zero eight, point zero five. The Connecticut Department Transportation Commissioner Garrett told the legislative hearing, we're one of the worst offending states in the nation. In two thousand twenty, Connecticut had the third highest number of drunk driving deaths in America. And you add on to that, Connecticut now allows to use cannabis by adults. All this leads to a recipe for disaster on our local roads when people were leaving this proposed venue. And then I talk about, then I wanted to quickly touch on the sound, right? The I feel the applicants failed to prove that you meet the requirement that the sound shall not, or yeah, shall not go past the property line, right? When you look at their, when you look at the previous middle, they use the, they said, yeah, I'm sorry, let me just start again. So music shall not be blown beyond the property boundaries. The application still approved that you meet this requirement. And discussing the control of sound, their sound engineering is now using the word should and not and not will not in his latest reports. I believe this is more than semantic semantic terms indicated by the applicant. He also goes further on to qualify his position by stating that his opinion that all these recommendations need to be implemented to actually potentially meet this requirement. And then, once again, so this is further addressed by recent submitted by the applicant, an email from ATI. I once states the measurements were taken together, design information not to show that music was audible at the property line. A noise test after the venues was built would do that. So once again, I believe this illustrates an uncertainty if the zoning regulation can be met. And then, let's see, okay. Yeah, I'll leave that as such. Oh, yeah, no, sorry. One more. The first submission from Valley Streets had used that term will not in in the in the statement of use, okay? The current one actually says shall not. So once again, there was a there was a change in their verbiage from their first middle into their current middle. And I believe I find that change in wording be quite telling. All right. I I also had concerns over beautiful noise, outdoor ceremony noise, generated noise and noise from people congregating outside a building. So in closing, my wife and I moved to Columbia nine years ago after living for over twenty five years in Willimantic. We chose Columbia for its rural character and school East Drive for a quiet neighborhood. Had there been a wedding venue as already established for something in nine Cardinal Road, we would never have purchased that property in school East Drive. We have safety concerns regarding the increase in traffic that anyone will bring. There are two group homes on our road that walk their clients in the street. There's no sidewalks for disabled pedestrians, walkers, animals, or children, and a large population of walkers and bikers in this area, especially on summer weekends. Major risk factors, pedestrian road traffic injuries, or speed, impaired driving, unsafe infrastructure, and in that with disability of walkers. Also like to touch on light pollution is a threat to rural areas. It's disruptive. It disrupts the ecosystem of our ecosystem that relies on natural darkness. Not only does this increase rural lighting makes star star rating harder, but it also seats into the nearby habitat, changing the resting feeding behavior of the of the wildlife, which we have quite a bit in our area. We should recognize that rural areas where darkness still exists as a natural resource should be protected. So my wife and I, we are hoping the commission members will perceive in a manner protects the investment of neighboring property owners, environmental pollution concerns, and community safe issues. And sadly, if this special permit is granted, my wife and I left to just regret our decision. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the public?
Yes, sir. My name is Tom Briggs. I live on Cook Hill Road, about a half mile from the property. I believe flooding is an issue on this property, and I'm very familiar with the property. I grew up on Cook Hill Road, and my father was very good friends with the original builder, named Freeman, who was in Manhattan. This was their summer home and weekend home. And my father was a caretaker. The best, I recall, probably nineteen sixty seven, nineteen sixty eight. It was literally this time of year, probably in the March, there was snow cover and a very heavy rain, and my father and I donned our boots, and we went to the property because the house was flooded with about six inches of water. We, the Freemans were were quite wealthy. They had a lot of fine art antiques. And we spent the better part of the night into the morning moving whatever we could to the second floor. So I just want to testify that I had personally seen that property flooded with six inches of water.
Can I just confirm, ask one question? Sure. You said that was in nineteen sixty eight, so.
Sixty seven or sixty eight. I'm not sure of the exact timeframe.
I'm sorry, yeah, for the record, mark for that, nineteen sixty eight.
Nineteen sixty seven, nineteen sixty eight. And I I was eight years old, so I don't remember the specific years, but I clearly remember that property being flooded and we had moved.
Okay. And and is that the only time, the only incident you remember when you were eighty?
That's the only incident I.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Great money, thirty nine, Golden Road. This application shouldn't be approved. The board previously voted this application down because it does not satisfy its requirements of special permit. And these, some of the same reasons why you voted it down still apply today. I I don't see a certain change to this application. It's not consistent with the plan of conservation. What has changed so far? I got a few rocks, twenty less applicants, and a light pole. The proposed use of the commercial facility is not in harmony with the neighborhood. The neighborhood's here. No one's saying this is in harmony, and it's not something that they want next to them. Traffic and the safety keeps coming up. That came up previously while I was voted down. There was a crash there today. I testified some of the roads are less than sixteen deep. Lots of concerns that you've heard from that. That was an issue that still issues today. And the proposed use will have a negative effect on the property values. Mr. Lamontey provided you his report and that specified that. So I'm sure you reviewed that. This new application does not address these differences that the board previously brought up. And virtually, I I see it as the same application. The only things that were pointed out is, you know, twenty less deaths, a few less rocks, and a and not a light pole. So therefore, I hope the board, again, votes this application down.
Thank you for the comments. Is there anyone else would like to talk? Okay. No other members of the public, Mr. Briggs?
One other.
Mr. Joe Lamontey. Yes, sir.
Go. Um, if I may.
Sure.
Colonel Briggs, I'd like to call Mr. Lamontey as an expert witness. I think you want him up there or would you want him to just?
Yeah, why don't you? Yeah. Be less awkward.
Any?
If I may, I'm going to ask him some introductory questions just to help get situated. At this point, I I believe the commission has received a copy of his report as well as the three underlying appraisals. Just double checking that.
Commission member has had an opportunity at this point.
They are all linked to on the town website, and I have one hard copy of each of them if anyone would like.
Mr. Lamontey, could you describe your background and experiences as an appraiser?
Yes. My experience is I started as a real estate agent. I became a real estate broker in nineteen seventy eight. And until nineteen ninety nine ninety, there was no requirement to have a license or certification as an appraiser. As a result of nineteen ninety nine, a failure act that canvas acted, each state was required to certify, you know, real estate appraisers. So I took additional courses back then. I became a certified commercial real estate appraiser. So I I hold the license of a real estate broker in Connecticut, real estate broker in Massachusetts, and certified general appraiser in in Connecticut, same thing in Massachusetts. And I've been doing real estate since nineteen seventy six as a as a broker, real estate agent, real estate broker, appraiser, real estate investor, real estate developer. I managed properties in the base for different banks. And nineteen ninety nine, ninety nine, they would build the station village condominium in Barburg with two other partners. So we had to go through special permit application, you know, the whole nine yards. And I've been involved in a lot of this type of, you know, appraisals, you know, before and after. One of which was in two thousand twenty one in North Haven, where it was very similar to what I'm discussing today, except what they proposing was a school, a private school, a high school for them. In a residential facility similar to what we we're talking about now. It was in North Haven, right under, near the skipping giant, you know, part very rural residential area. And so we did the same thing, you know, we did the before and after, and after a lot of discussions.
But that came in, Mr. Lamontey, you mentioned the before and after appraisal.
Yeah.
Could you, what was your assignment here when when we engaged you?
So when when we were engaged, we were asked to look at at this facility in terms of what they infected would be under residential neighborhood. So let's try, we provide the three appraisals, you know, of these three properties as a sample. And whatever value you see there, that's value supported by market data. We look at comparables, you make adjustments according to U.S. standard protection of products. And you come out with with a value which is very well supported. That's obviously an opinion of value based on the data that is available. And and by the way, the the appraisals are predicated on January twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three. So whatever value we we're talking about, I'm certifying to January twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three, not today, not yesterday. This particular day, that's when we went to look at the properties. So in the process of doing what what you see there, we visit each property and inspected every room of each property. We went up and down, basement, exterior, I took, I don't know.
Can I, for the sake of efficiency, say, I don't know that we are in a position to challenge what your current valuation of those three properties are. So the need to go in extreme detail
No.
is probably not a preference of anyone here, but if you want to, you're welcome to, but it's probably not an efficient use of time.
I agree.
I think the big question that we have is, we read read the report is,
Yes.
what was the basis that you had for coming up with the the price differential for before and after? That's really what I think this this topic is about. And and I would appreciate you going into considerable detail
Yes.
on the specific analysis process you used to come up with that differential for the before and the after in this case. Any relevant examples that you could you say that I found this circumstance and this is how I acquired it? That would be very helpful to us.
You mean outside of this market?
I'm not saying. Let's let her lead him down that road first.
I I understand what you're asking, and and I'm not going to have him figure out, explain how he got to his comparables, but I do think some of the background of how, what's important in that appraisal leads to what's important in having to do the assessment and the comparison because there isn't a building built. And and Mr. Lamontey, maybe you could address that now because that does, that is a concern of theirs is that you've you've reached a conclusion and opinion regarding a negative impact in the valuation of these properties. And if you could, with respect, let's just start with Heather Connors.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So we picked one property to talk about, and Heather Connors. Right. And and if you folks do have a, I don't know if you have a copy of the appraisal, but the summary report.
I have a copy of the summary.
The summary report, we can go along in that. So that might be helpful. And I apologize, it doesn't have page numbers. It's about six or seven, and you'll see six or seven, page six or seven in. And he has a page that talks about as before. And if it helps, it looks like that. That page. This page, I apologize, looks like that. This is the report, not the.
No, Josh, since nobody else has, is playing that copy, can I use it? I read it colored color, but I want to.
So let's. But just last one, you're ready. Okay. So let's focus on Heather Connors. And I I would just bring to the commission's attention that Miss Connors sent in pictures from her bedroom window that I think are in the records now.
I just received from.
Okay, because they give a beautiful view of where this parking lot will be. And that's will lead into, I will let, Mr. Lamontey, so you did it before. How did you assess any change in value to her property if this were built?
Okay, so the the basis is what we did before, that's the value. Okay, we talked very extensively in the report for after component. What will happen if a special permit application is approved? You allow a commercial facility to to be built in in a rural residential, agricultural area, neighborhood market. So that's the basis that that I'm starting from. What impact is going to have? Well, I talked in my report, and I had some testimony tonight, traffic, noise, light pollution. The main component that I talked very extensively in the report is location. It's the same in real estate, it's location, location, locations. That's very true. I heard testimony from the gentleman over there that he went and bought a house. If they knew it was going to be some commercial development in in this particular neighborhood where they bought a house. I'm talking about here in my report. I never talked to him before. I I don't know who the gentleman is. But I got the same specifics in my report. So I was asked a question, I believe it was you in the prior meeting, what is the scientific data? It's not scientific data. As a matter of fact, the appraisal.
I did use that term. That wasn't another meeting. We can't use anything from another meeting here. We need it all presented here. I did correct what I said, and I said factual.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, you use much of data, that's what we do. But the gentleman, the review of my report, Mr. Patrick Lamb, actually agreed with me. In his review, he says that I correctly stated that there are no paid sales in this market. Therefore, you cannot do a before and after value without pay sales in this market, which are truly comparable, common. So he agreed with my position. That's what I said here. So after I reached my conclusion of value before, how I reached my conclusion in the after, every two cars me road stands right in front of seventy nine cars me road property. Standing in their bedroom, whatever photo they send you, I took the same photo, my camera. So you can directly see where the parking area is going to be. And whatever cars, they're going to come up from that side, and they're going to shine directly into the bedrooms. There's no way that they can avoid that absolutely. There's no way that they can avoid that, absolutely not. So how I adjusted? I made a ten percent adjustments for location and, you know, change of views. And, and the other two properties for, you know, my bakery road and nine's police drive. And I made a fifteen percent adjustment on this one because it's more an impact being directly across from this facility that's been proposed. Then I asked for, you know, light pollution, I, I adjusted for change of views, which I'm specifically talking about in my report. Again, my opinion as a professional appraiser.
I'm just going to interject, the numbers that he's referring to are on page sixty-eight and sixty-nine of his report. The actual break.
I appreciate him presenting those facts to us here, here tonight, not referencing page numbers in our report that. We've been, any information I would appreciate being submitted here and him, him reviewing it directly so that we can understand better.
I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to follow along, that's what he's referring to.
Right, I'm referring to page sixty-eight, sixteen.
Okay, so why don't you explain what's on page sixty-eight and sixty-nine? So we can understand better what you're trying to explain to us.
All right, so if you open the report on page sixty-eight, starting from the top, you see analysis as I said. We're referring to, you know, in, in terms of adjustments to the US mix. The, the tables are specifically available, you know, to show you what are the adjustments are on the left-hand side and what are the adjustments are now. You know, we can, we can have a discussion, why is fifteen percent or why is twenty? But the main point is, if you introduce a commercial facility in a rural agricultural residential area, it's going to have an impact and the impact is negative. We can debate, you know, if it's twenty percent, if it's twenty-five, we can debate, you know, whatever percentage you want. But my point is, I want to show that based on my professional opinion, based on my experience, it's going to have a negative impact. We can argue on the percentage, but the point is, it's not so much on the percentage, it's the negative impact is going to have in, in this particular market. There's no way to avoid that. As a matter of fact, I, I have a very clearly stated that if you give an opportunity to a potential buyer to buy in this location, knowing that it could be a wedding facility versus another location, similar houses. Where, where it's not, I'm going to be, no, some change and not, not, no special permit, I guarantee you, they're going to choose the other location. The only component, the only variable that you can apply is called price. You can't change the location, you can't change the house. The three elements, based on the location, is going to be pricing. If you lower the price enough, I know as a broker, I've done it many times, you lower the price enough, you want to find a buyer. The pricing is going to overcome the negative perception or thinking of the, you know, whatever commercial facility is going to be put in there. So that's how I made the adjustments, but the main purpose is you show there is an impact and that makes it negative, in my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Lamonti.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Lamonti, Mr. Lem mentioned that you should have used, I guess, comparables from other projects in the other part of the state. Do you, do you agree with that, uh, uh, conclusion, yes?
Uh, no, as a matter of fact, if you read this, it's re- re- report, you know, which is a review of my report. It clearly states that I correctly stated there are no paid sales in this market. Therefore, i- if I choose another location, for instance, the North Haven where this high school was proposed, that's a different market. And so each market is, is its own characteristics, is its own, you know, negative is on positive attributes. So you better look at specific market, otherwise, you know, you are, you are kind of wandering in, in the dark, you know.
Mr. Lamonti, you've mentioned you've done some other projects.
Yes.
And, and to this point about not using other sites. You mentioned, um, that you had done a similar analysis for a, I think it was a Dunkin' Donuts that was going to be built.
Yes.
Um, could you explain, did you come to the same numbers that you did here, the thirty percent?
It, it was many years ago, this property was in Edmonton. Uh, they, they were roughly about, you know, in the twenty to twenty-five percent, you know, but I don't remember.
But, but it was dependent on that site, isn't that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and how many of these before and after comparable appraisals have you done?
Oh, quite few. For fourteen years, I was working in, as an independent appraiser for the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation.
And, and did you have to do these type of analyses for them?
Yes, because, you know, the state was taking properties partially or totally.
And did those all involve, but they, in an, an opinion of value, even though something hadn't been built yet?
Yeah, before and after.
And was that in accordance with the state of Connecticut's DOT requirements for the appraisal?
Yes.
And they accepted all those appraisals, right?
I was working for them, not directly, as an independent appraiser. Where I had to be under a through list of Department of Transportation operators to do what I did.
So the methodology you use for those is the same as here?
I praise most of the properties on the acute region, New Haven, you know, when, when they built it, they took hundreds of properties.
I'm told you're going to testify.
But we're talking about different things.
Please don't interrupt. If you want to testify, you can raise your hand and you'll be recognized at the next opportunity for a speaker.
These, these are things about the same components of before and after, that's, that's what I was talking about.
Um, so you did the Connors house.
Yes.
And, and you also did a property on Scully's Drive. How did you evaluate that compared to the, the other two properties?
Well, if you look on page sixty-eight, that's in the after, the adjustments that are here. Now, on Scully's Drive and Baker Hill Road, the adjustments for location and I call a location and compatibility. It's ten percent, you know, for those, those two houses, as opposed to Mr. Connors and Addie Two, which is direct across. It's minus fifteen percent and I have an explanation, you know, right next to, to the adjustment, why this is higher than the other two. Because it's more of an impact for Mr. Connors.
And so what is your opinion about the impact of, on the property values of the properties you appraised if this project?
Well, as I know, know the, and the, and the report, page sixty-six, sixty-nine, you know, I got the total, it's thirty percent each for nine, nine Scully's Drive and for Baker Hill. And then in the case of Mr. Connors, who has me rolling, it's minus thirty-five, just because on the, on the location adjustment, it's five percent higher. Based on the fact that they are direct across. And as I, as I said, I was standing in his bedroom, you know, the parking is right, right across from, in front of his house. And so whatever is going to come in from that facility, especially at night, the lights want to definitely be shining in that bedroom.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. I have something else. So I've got some opportunity to respond to that and, sir.
Do you want to go for a question?
No, no, I, I think Mr. Stumpf wanted to talk first because he was sitting next to those people and he had.
I have questions, I'm going to ask them, but they'll.
So.
Well, no, I think, I think it's nice first. It's good to ask questions now rather than moving on to the next question.
But, but that was my point, so I have questions also.
So why don't you go ahead?
My name is Richard Torosio, I have the To Baker Hill Road. And I, I'm just confused at the, the analogy of using a Dunkin' Donuts compared to what we were talking about. Uh, they're two totally different things, the traffic counts are going to be totally, totally different. Uh, I, I'm very, very close to this property, you know, butts mine. I've been a business owner for thirty years and ten different restaurants, edible arrangements in Willamette. And I don't see what the big issue is. You're talking about flood plains and all this and it, it's the guy's house, it, it's flooded before, we'd heard that. It was forty-five, fifty years ago, so I don't understand why we're talking about that now because he wants to put a wedding venue, he's not adding another building, he wants to put a tent up. He wants to use the, the common area. So the noise, I, I've lived there for sixteen years. And in sixteen years, when Michel Angelidi's on the property, one time I heard music and that's when he was losing the property. And his, his kids were outside, they had the music outside and it was turned up, it was as loud as it could be. And even that amount that I heard, it didn't bother me and I have fire pits outside, ten mile river, it's part of my river, I own into it. I've never had any floods at my house, um, I, I don't know if I'm considered a flood plain area, but my property goes right into the river. So I'm, I'm just confused at all, all these things that we're talking about and everybody's so against something. Craig Gates is nothing to me, he, I don't, I don't owe him anything, he doesn't owe me anything. I've never done business with him, I've never bought a car from him, nothing. But I do know what kind of business guy he is and how he runs his businesses. And I, I would prefer to run my businesses the same way.
Just, just for the record, we're not evaluating the way a business is operated.
Yeah, but I, I have my opinion, but I have my opinion.
But this is a planning and zoning meeting.
I understand that, but it's, it has, oh, please hear me out. Can't, please, you interrupted me, you interrupted me.
The point of order, I'm asking you to only speak to zoning topics.
This, that's.
It is part of my state, this is part of it. Uh, operation of a business on an ongoing basis is not a land use decision.
Isn't this what we're talking about, is him running a business?
No, it's not, we're talking about a land use decision.
Which is based on to run the?
This, I respectfully would ask, you understand the process here.
I understand.
You didn't read this statement at the start of the meeting, then I came in a little later, but understand, I'm asking you to stay on point and talk to the prominent issues that we can consider as a planning and zoning commission. And that's what I'm asking you to do.
Okay.
And that's the reason for the.
I thought was relevant for what I had.
Yes, unfortunately, those are not things that we take into account, we take into account whether th- this use of the land is appropriate. That's the, the, that's what our.
So people walking down the street is something that's appropriate to talk about?
Uh, land use decisions.
That's not, that has nothing to do with land use, somebody walking down the street. And that's what I heard somebody else say, so you're, you're.
I'm familiar with the process.
I am familiar with the process.
Self-educated. I'm not, I'm not going to educate.
Rick, you don't have to argue with me.
I'm not arguing with you.
You actually are, you're telling me, I'm asking you questions about something and you're not giving me an answer.
You don't understand the process.
I do understand the process, please, please stop telling me I don't understand the process.
Well.
I understand the process. If somebody else is talking about things that don't have any relevance to what you're asking about, I'm going to bring that up. And somebody talking about somebody walking down the street and not having the room to walk down that street is not relevant to the land use.
And that's your perspective.
It's not my perspective, it's the truth. So if you're going to, if you're going to, please, don't interrupt me again, okay? If, if you're going to, if you're going to tell me.
I will interrupt you as a point of order.
Okay.
If you want to testify, I would ask you to testify.
I'm trying to, Rick.
I'm asking you to stay on point.
I'm trying to, you keep interrupting me.
Okay, so for, for the record, please stick to the pertinent.
I am. Okay? So now when you're talking about people walking down the street. The, the telephone pole in front of my house has been hit three or four times. Until the town decided to finally put up three stop signs. Okay, nobody complained about that. Nobody had a problem with the telephone pole being hit in front of my house. So that's one issue there. We're, we're talking about a, a, a land use of something that's going to be used for seventy-five days, I think, I heard. So I was on the phone call the whole time by not being here, so I did hear everything. So seventy-five days, we're talking about Dunkin' Donuts.
It's actually fifteen days.
Oh, whatever, whatever comes, so, so the, the, the amount of time it's going to be used is nothing. The amount of noise that it's going to make, if we have things in place to control that, if we have rules and regulations that he has to follow and if he doesn't follow them, they get taken away, what's the problem? I'm in his backyard. I can literally, I'm probably twenty-five hundred feet as the crow flies to his back door. And I don't have a problem and I'm, I'm pretty darned close. So when all these people are talking about everything that's going on, I, I don't get it, we have, we have land uses being done now in this town that nobody's complaining about, things where cars are sitting there that haven't been sold in fifteen years. That's land use, it's supposed to be a dealership, nothing gets sold out of there. We have Chihuahua, it's right on, uh, uh, Willamette Road. But because he's been grandfathered in, that's okay. If people come out of that driveway and trucks go down that road, that's going to cause a problem. So if we build how many houses on that property, I think he's, I think that, that property has the right to build up to fifteen houses on the front piece of that property by the barn. So what does that do, what does that impact for traffic? We have traffic that cuts through every single day going into Willamette, every day. But most of the people don't see it because they don't live on the corner that I live on. But it happens every single day, we have to call the police to come down there and slow everybody down, we have to call the police to come down there to stop them from going through the stop signs, which happens every single day. So I think it's just a nitpick thing on somebody who wants to do something better with the property that still pays the taxes. And doesn't hurt anybody. I, in, in some people's opinion, it hurts them because they don't want to see the headlights, they don't want to see the traffic, they think it's going to be a burden. I, I don't see it, you know, I'm.
I'm not noted.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I, I really appreciate no comments while somebody else is testifying.
So I know, I know I'm in the minority here, but I, I really don't have a problem with it, I'm sorry, this is my first meeting, I've had other things that have kept me away. But, uh, like I said, being a business owner myself, I don't see the issue.
Mr. Lawrence? Yeah, thank you, I wanted to stand up here and, uh, it's already ten o nine, I'll try to be simple and direct, good evening, Mr. Lawrence.
Good evening.
Lamonti, am I saying you?
Lamonti, yes.
Lamonti, okay. Um, I, I've got a number of what I think are simple, direct, uh, questions that, that I have about your appraisal. I'll ask them quickly and hopefully you can answer them directly in the move and process along.
Yes.
So, um, your report is dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, was that about the time that you gave that report to Attorney Briggs?
No, that's the date when we inspected the properties.
Okay. Um, and when did, when did you first, uh, have any contact, or when did Attorney Briggs ask you to prepare an appraisal report?
Uh, it was before January twenty-six.
All right, did you maintain a file?
Yes.
With you?
Yes.
Did you bring that file with you?
No, I, I have four different files on this property because, you know, the three properties last year, you know, all the extra paperwork, no, I didn't bring it with me, I, I don't.
All right, so you have a file that might have contained the information that you used in preparing this report. You knew you were going to testify tonight, but you didn't bring it with you.
I didn't bring it with me, but we have a four word file on this, this question.
You answered the question.
Yes.
Um, and then when, when, what were you asked to do by Attorney Briggs?
Uh, he asked me if I was familiar with doing evaluations of real estate, of course, I said, yes, I am. Then I said, what, what were you looking, what is the purpose or what are you looking for? You need to know the purpose and the scope. And so she explained to me about special permit and so forth and so on, and that's when I interjected, I said, so you're going to need a before and after value. And she asked me, you know, explain, and I, I explained. So she said, okay, we're going to, we're going to engage you to do an appraisal and she mentioned different properties, then the discussion narrowed down on this three particular properties.
All right, and did you, did you meet personally with Attorney Briggs?
Uh, no, no, this was a phone conversation and emails.
Okay, and, and I assume you had no prior contact with her?
No.
Prior to this engagement?
No.
And what information were you provided by Attorney Briggs before you began your appraisal process?
She emailed to our office, you know, in minutes from the, from the planning and zoning commission, what was, what had inspired, you know, before, based on the, on the application that was submitted. So we got minutes of that, that's part of the work file that you referred to. And that's, that's basically that. As part of that, we got, as Subay met, you know, we, then the next step is we got to, to the town line, you know, where we got information as far as each property. And then we contacted the property owners and we, we went to inspect the properties and that's the date that you see. January twenty-six, the date of this report is February twenty.
Okay, that's fine, well, we have the date of the report. Well, we are the date of the report. Um, did you, uh, review any of the reports that was submitted by the applicant in this matter prior to? Um, submitting your appraisal?
Yes.
What were the reports that you reviewed?
Well, one was a traffic study.
Yeah, you reviewed that.
Yeah, and whatever was submitted was, was.
So I'm asking you, what, what, what specific reports?
One was intent of use, if I remember correctly, so it was a layout of what a specific they're going to do, fifteen events. Uh, one hundred eighty, uh, attendees plus the staff.
Okay, so you read the statement of use?
Yes.
You reviewed, you said you reviewed the traffic report?
Yes.
Did you review the sound report?
Yes.
Did you physically visit the site? Did you go down to the Cars Mill Seventy-Nine Cars Mill home on the property?
No.
Did you ask permission to do that?
No, uh, we, we looked at the property from the street.
All right, so you've never actually physically inspected this site where this is going to be?
No, but I got to bring to your attention, we are now facing seventy-nine cars. That was not the scope or purpose of my work, so I had no need to go there.
You are, you didn't think it was necessary to get down and look at the site? But how did you determine that you could have seen, uh, lights from cars leaving the parking area? How'd you make that determination?
How, well, the, the land, you know, is, is drops down, obviously, when you come out, you gotta go up. Driveway or roadway, whatever they're going to build. And so there's no way that any car exceeding, you know, the side is not going to shine on the Cars Mill Road.
All right, did you, how, how do you base that opinion, you're not a traffic insider, are you?
I asked the property owner, I said during the night, you know, because they have lights over there, you know, for the parking.
Were you aware that the driveway to this facility is going to be in a different location from where it is now?
Uh, based on.
Are you aware that the driveway from this application is in a different location?
No, but I'm going to answer your question, I asked the property owner, the guy lives there, I said, what would impact you see from the lights from the parking lot? And he explained to me that the lights come right into his property. So my assumption is that, that. It, without going into very details, okay, my, my purpose, my scope of hiring us to do this appraisal is to establish if it's going to be an impact. If you want to mix commercial use in a rural residential, a rural residential neighborhood, it's going to have an impact. In my opinion, it's negative impact.
All right, so you assumed that, you assumed, okay. That the park, the lights from vehicles are going to shine into somebody's house that you look, great, so that's an assumption.
It's particular property, L two. Not for the, the road, not nice for this, L two, Cars Mill.
And. Did you review the planning and zoning regulations for this, uh, facility?
Yes, whatever was in the, in the package that was emailed to us. Section fifty-two point five, whatever was that number.
And do you know how many events per year that are, are allowed under this regulation?
This particular one, it says fifteen.
Fifteen per year, correct? And in the statement of use, did you see that the applicant intends to have only one event per week, per weekend? Did you see that?
Yes, yeah.
You know that the days during the week, uh, during which an event can be held are limited?
What do you mean?
Limited as to what days an event could be held, did you realize?
Oh, yeah, uh, weekends.
Well, I'm asking.
Yeah, yes, yes.
And what did, do you remember what days?
Uh, uh, weekends, if I remember holidays.
And do you recall that there's time limits on when a, um, event can be held?
Yes, from eleven to eleven.
How many people, uh, maximum people, how many of the maximum people I can.
One sixty plus attendees, but when, when I did this, if I remember, it was one eighty.
So the fact that, that what your, what is based on one eighty instead of one sixty impact your opinion at all?
No, no, the impact is the commercial use in a residential rural, uh, neighborhood.
So you make a, a, a big issue about what you claim to be an impact in the neighborhood. Um, you're aware that the regulations require that music not be audible at the property lines, correct? You're aware of that regulation?
Yes.
Okay, and you're aware that the sound engineer that, uh, performer is testing concluded that if. Certain construction techniques were followed, that music would not be audible at property lines, did you review that practical board? You said you did.
Uh, so I'm not an expert in sound, but I heard the testimony, so I had it very clearly about it.
All right, so it's not going to be, it's not going to impact the neighbors in terms of noise from music, right?
I can't comment on that because I'm not an expert in music. So the, the.
I'm asking the public not to, not to speak whatsoever when there are other people testifying, please.
And did you review the, uh, the lighting standards that, uh, the applicant proposes?
Uh, the review, you mean, and that's all, but it's soft light.
And you know if the actual facility itself, the, the building that's. You know if that can be seen from the road?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I'm aware of everything, see, this is not, the point is not.
Well, I'm just.
I'm aware. Your appraisal says sixty feet, somebody else says seventy feet, so I don't know which one is what. But it sticks to seventy feet, the road.
So on page two, right at the beginning of your report. You refer that this is a large commercial or entertainment facility. A large commercial or entertainment facility.
Yes.
What's the basis for that?
Uh, number of attendees and, you know, plus the state and type of activity. You know, wedding, it, it's an intense use, you know. You, you, you can put a daycare there, you know, the daycare obviously is going to be much, you know, less of an impact. It's going to be something, you know, le- less of an impact than a wedding facility because. The attendees want to come at a certain time and they're going to leave at a certain time, they're going to congregate. Possibly outside, you know, so that, that, that's not compatible with, with the residential area.
Can you tell me as an expert appraiser, what an appraiser would use for definition of a large? Commercial facility?
I just did.
You just did, you think, you think the event center that's proposed is a large commercial facility when it's in use fifteen days? Per year, seventy-five hours per the, per the county, you're seventy-five hours. That's a large commercial facility, you're, you're.
Large and intense use in terms of the type of, uh, facility.
So are you talking about a large building or are you talking about intense use?
Intense, uh, large in terms of the commercial aspect of the, that proposed facility. It's also an, the, the point is you're putting a commercial activity in a rural residential area.
All right, so would you agree with me that when you, uh. Prepare appraisals for the State Department of Transportation?
Yes.
You're looking at what, uh, the property, somebody's property would be worth after the state takes some of that property, correct?
We, you got to do before and after.
You're going to, uh, appraise when the property is.
And some.
National state, and then if the state's going to widen roads, you're going to take some of that property.
Correct.
And then, so you give an appraisal, it's worth less when the state takes some of the property.
It's all damage.
Right, so that's not really the situation here, nobody's taking anybody's property.
I, I never implied it was similar, that, that was based on my experience as a professional appraiser.
That's apples and oranges, isn't it, they're not, they're not all the same.
No.
I, I thought your testimony was that I've done this before and after stuff a lot of times, including for department. Right, but those are totally, that's a totally different analysis than here.
Now, the, the, the scope and the purpose is the same, different properties, the different locations, but it's the same aspect.
How is doing a before and after appraisal of a DOT? Taken by eminent domain similar to your analysis here, where you're doing the, the alleged before and after. As a result of a commercial facility that you call a large commercial facility, being put in, 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 in a.
Okay.
Forty acres.
So DOT, we were calling it damages, and a year is the minimum value, is the same thing. In, in other words, the point is, I, I'm trying to establish what, what impact is going to have. Possibly it's no impact, it could be neutral, it could be negative. Unfortunately, mixing a commercial, I, I seen it before, I've seen it many times, you put a commercial view in a rural, rural residential area. It's going to end there, because, you know, the, the base, the base point is, it, it is at home by, they look at properties. They have a choice, so this is my base of my report that I have that.
You've heard that, and let's just sort of move on.
Well, I, I might reinforce it.
Well, you've done that a number of times.
Thank you.
Your opinions, your opinions, sir.
As a professional opinion.
You are fucked. All right, so you mentioned in your appraisal that the change of, uh, use in this property. Uh, you, you, you're aware that this is still going to be used as a. The majority use of this property is as a one-family residence, you know that?
Uh, yes, but if, if I may, I commented on my report. That by, by approving a special permit, you, you're changing the component of the most. Luxury home and the most expensive home in the neighborhood is going to be affected. So now only you want to have a banquet facility, but this house, in my opinion, is going to be worth less, it's going to be, it's going to have an effect. If that surrounding properties have an effect, a negative, and so it's seventy-nine Cars Mill Road. Is going to be affected in a negative way in terms of their appeal. In other words, if you don't do anything, this house is the premier. Number one house in the whole neighborhood, it's number one, without any question. So by doing so, if, if it's going to go through, this house is going to affect the negative.
So you're telling me that a six thousand square foot house, okay? The value of that house is going to impact the, the opinion of a house that's three thousand square feet?
In other words, if, if you.
I, I'm asking, that, I think that's what you're saying.
Yet, no, 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 we talk about location, I, I think you misunderstood. It, the main basis is location, so if I'm looking at a location, I'm, I'm a homeowner. And I'm looking around, I see what are the properties, what are the values? And I, I see seventy-nine Cars Mill Road, something that is worth two, two hundred million, that whatever is the value of the property. And I'm buying close to, I'm in a very good company, so I'm heading to location.
What objective evidence do you have, sir, in your report? That is a mixed use, as you call it, will have a detrimental impact, objective evidence on this neighborhood?
All right, define objective.
Um, well, let me give you an example. Have you gone, did you take an opportunity to go look at, uh, another, say, uh, commercial venture? Uh, in the town of Columbia and see how the, uh, values were affected? During that, uh, commercial venture within, because there is a, a number of them in Columbia, you were that, right?
Yes, of course.
And you're aware that there's a, a, a farm, uh, winery?
Yes.
That has events up to two hundred people, no limitation as to the number of events?
Yes.
Did you have an opportunity to look at that neighborhood and look at the sales in that neighborhood? And see, that's what I mean by objectives, did you do any of those kind of things that normally an appraiser would do? Maybe you wouldn't do it, but most appraisers.
I object to strongly what you said, the normal appraiser would do, I object to that, you, you don't know that. Uh, to answer your question, no, and you, I want to tell you why.
I'm not asking you why, I asked you if you have, if you get it and you said you get it.
It's no relevant to my work, no relevance whatsoever, and the appraiser that review my work agreed. Is stating right now why, you want to show me, I show you what it is.
No, no, I, I, I'm familiar with.
Okay, so then he says, a steady report, that there's no pay sales in this neighborhood. So for going outside this neighborhood, just because it's some other commercial component, it doesn't do any, any good.
All right, yeah, the traffic report says that the low volume of, of. Traffic that would be generated is actually, uh, lower than what would be the traffic. Generated by this event facility, are you aware of that, of that statement in the traffic?
Can you, can you repeat that, please?
The traffic engineer, okay, of many years' experience, filed a report which you indicated you read. And in it, he indicates that the volume of traffic that's going to be generated by this facility is less than. The traffic that would be generated by a subdivision that could be put in a swing, did you read that?
Yeah, I read that.
And what impact, if any, did that have on your, your opinion?
None.
You got your opinion on, on what the objective?
I'm not praising a subdivision, my purpose of the appraisal is before and after, what impact is going to have if you have a commercial facility built? In the middle of rural residential neighborhood.
And the traffic engineer also says that the roads, um, can, uh, safely accommodate. Traffic volumes that this, the event facility, uh, will generate, uh, do you have any reason to disagree with that?
I'm not an expert in traffic, if he says so, I, I agree. That's not my cup of tea, I have nothing to do with that.
Were you aware that the, the traffic accident case of this project will have a. Uh, low impact in that it's a low-volume country road before and after this?
I apologize to the expert, that's, I have nothing to do with it.
You have a different opinion?
No, 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 I, I, absolutely, what, what I'm saying is, you, you want to build a commercial facility in a rural residential neighborhood. It's going to have an impact.
All right, now there are a number of wedding, uh, facilities within a relatively small area. Including one in Hampton, okay? There are, uh, I think two in Thompson. There are, uh, two in Woodstock. Um, all in residential neighborhoods, everyone, and I can name them all if you want. Did you, in your appraisal process, take a look at those wedding event? Facilities in a residential neighborhood and try to make any determination objectively? Whether in that neighborhood, okay, where they already exist, okay, so we're not having to speculate. Based upon forty, seventy years of experience, okay? But you could actually go and determine whether that facility impacted in a negative way. The surrounding households, did you do that?
Of course not, that, that's not the purpose of, uh, of what we did, that's a different market.
Purpose that you had was to try to show this commission without any sort of objective evidence that based upon your opinion, your expert opinion. That if this facility goes in, then everybody's house is going to go down ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent. In fact, you don't even know the percentage is going to go down because you said we can disagree a lot.
You said that, I didn't.
Well, I think you said, uh, let me, let me backtrack. That you based your opinion on your, your years' experience as an appraiser.
And I stand by that.
Right, and you, and you said you could argue about the percentage, so you're not even sure of the percentage.
No, you misunderstood me.
I, I guess I did, so why don't you clarify that?
So, the, the point that I'm trying to, to show the commission is that if you're going to mix commercial and residential. In a rural residential area, it's going to have an impact. Now, you can argue on the ten percent or twenty or thirty-five, that's not the point. I had to identify, you know, a number because I had, I'd done the appraisal before and I got to show you as after. But the point is that the market is impacting. Based on the fact that you want to mix residential and commercial. Now, how I base on that, well, I'm in charge in the real estate for forty-seven years. You, you don't learn this from books, I do every day of my life, forty-seven years, I work seven days a week, twelve hours a day. And so what I'm talking about is based on my life experience as a professional, and I've seen it. I've seen it left and right, now, so the locations that you mentioned to me, I know all of them. But what point would serve for me to go to Thompson and compare Thompson to Columbia, uh, Cars Mill Road? It will serve no purpose, and there's no way you can make a comparison, even if you want it, hundred percent, you have.
So, as, as a gentleman who holds himself out as an, uh, an appraiser, as an expert appraiser. You're telling me that an appraiser cannot look at a similar facility in another town? And, and develop some objective criteria? And, and that somebody can use as a comparison of what happened in this neighborhood? Do you have, you, you think this neighborhood in Columbia is so unique that you can't compare it to anywhere else?
That's how what I said. Uh, I want to refer you again to your appraisal review, the rest page, what the seniorship page is. It agrees with me that there are no pay sales in this market, therefore, if they were paid. they were paid sales, I would have used it, I would have showed you what impact is having since they are not. Going to another market, it serves no purpose, just the the fact of doing it, you know, the the analysis is serving no purpose. Paid sales are going to be here in this market, not because you need, this is the market that we 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 took here, not Anton, not Thompson.
All right, and let me just ask you, I think we're getting to you again. Is it your testimony that this these appraisals, as several that you prepared?
Yes.
Are in accordance with the professional standards that an appraiser is required?
Hundred percent.
All right, and you you saw the report that we submitted in which he disagreed with that?
Sir, this is not a report, this is, this is a review.
Well, it's a, it's a report, it's a report.
No, it's a review.
It's called a review.
And I'm going to address that, and you call it tech top, it's not such a thing as a tech top, it's best, best top. So he he's on, he's on, he doesn't know what he's what he's doing, right? Tech top, what kind of tech is? Okay, so let me tell you the the terminology it's talking about. You can, can I show you this, what is that again? Real estate appraisal report, that's what it misrepresents. Now, if, and one of my other cases, if I could complete a physical report, it thinks it's a violation, yeah, go back. Hundred percent you suspect.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont, you are, appreciate your answer, your work, okay?
Is there anyone else who wanted to testify?
There are two people online.
I would like to, I would like to only have all people and not get testified, yes, sir?
I would just like to call to everyone's attention.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Joe Stump for Baker Hill Road. Last night, there was a collision between a car and a holder right in front of seventy nine Cars Mill Road.
Thank you very much. It would be a little on the tooth, I think it would be appropriate for the
We were just going to inquire if we may, what timeframe are you on? Because my person can come back, we're not, we're not going to finish tonight.
No, we're not going to finish tonight.
We're getting diminishing returns on brains, I think, at this point.
I would agree.
Mr. Chairman?
I did have two people on the Zoom chat that had questions, but the first one is Heather and Joe.
This is Heather Connors, can you hear me? Hello? I can't hear you guys anymore, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, Heather, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, I can hear you now, thank you. Um, this is Heather Connors, eighty two Cards Mill Road. I just wanted to, you know, make a few comments. I know Mr. Lamont, I testified about, you know, the view from our bedroom window to the to seventy nine Cards Mill Road, you know, based on the reports that were submitted by the applicant on Thursday and that we didn't get a chance to look over until this weekend, we decided to take pictures from our bedroom windows just so that the commission could see just how close this facility and house is to ours, as I feel as though people are making it sound as though it's it's not too close. You know, the you can very clearly see through our window, the driveway, you can very clearly see the driveway lights from our bedroom window. We've also been able to see all of the construction they're doing at the barn through our window, we've been hearing all of the construction from through our bedroom window. So I know they said that they're, you know, they did another noise study and that they, you know, discerned that the the guitar playing wasn't that audible, but, you know, anything that goes on in that field is audible from our from our yard. So as Mr., you know, and we did tell Mr. Lamont that we can see the the truck lights and the street lights and the driveway lights from our bedroom window because they shine right in at nighttime. So, you know, from someone who was directly across the street, that is, that is accurate. We also wanted to point out, as some other members of the public have already, that yes, it's only going to be fifteen events, but it's going to be fifteen events during wedding season. Wedding season typically is June through September, and with one every weekend, that's guaranteed to have an event across the street from our house every single weekend all summer long. And that might not be significant to some people, but living across the street, that's extremely significant to us. Location does matter. I know that the Valbridge report minimized the importance of location in their report, but we would never have purchased this house if we had thought a wedding venue was going to be built across the street from it. And now we're thinking about, are we going to stay here? And we're very concerned that even the perception of a wedding venue being built across the street would be detrimental to us being able to sell our home. So location matters. Every real estate agent will tell you that location matters. It mattered to us when we bought this house, and it's going to matter to us when we sell it and to the people who are going to be buying it after us. Someone already mentioned that there was an accident right out of seventy nine Cards Mill today, I do know that that was reported to the state police, so hopefully there's a report if anyone feels the need to verify that it occurred. And, you know, we just would like to, you know, support what Mr. Lamont said regarding our house. We had conversations with him, we did not meet him or know him prior to the appraisal. You know, we thought he was very professional, we appreciated his feedback, we did not try to influence him in any way, we wanted a sincere appraisal based on what he thought, you know, is this going to impact us or not? We need to know. You know, we didn't try to sway him in any way, shape or form, we didn't know him, he was, you know, recommended as a professional that would be good to use in this type of a matter, and, you know, we we don't have any complaints about his professionalism at all.
Thank you.
All right, I'm on, I don't know if I can lower my hand, but.
Next up, Bethany Burns, can you keep this brief because it's very late and we're going to continue this public hearing to two weeks from tonight.
Bethany Burns, ninety three Johnson Road, I just wanted to reiterate too that although they're saying fifteen events is only a fraction of the weekends, the summer months are thirteen weeks, so if there's one event on a weekend all summer, that is every single weekend that we're outside trying to enjoy the quiet, peaceful neighborhood in our own yards that we're going to be hearing a wedding event occurring and the aftermath of it, where people are gathering by their vehicles, making loud noises, increased traffic, which I think we've said multiple times. And I just, again, want to reiterate that we purchased our home in a quiet, peaceful, safe neighborhood. The traffic has me very concerned and like other members have, or other public members have said, you know, there was a car accident today where they hit the rocks on Cards Mill Road right in front of seventy nine, so that report was completed. I'm just very concerned, even right now, driving down that road, it's very narrow, people are over the yellow line, just the other day I was behind a box truck that was straddling the yellow line, so just concerned for my family's safety, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to suggest that we continue this public hearing to the twenty seventh is our next regular meeting.
Sounds good.
So I'm going to make the motion that we continue the public hearing to March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three at seven P M. Okay. Having said, in discussion, always in favor? That would be unanimous, thank you. So this public hearing is continuing to two weeks from tonight. I hope we can wrap it up then, but still, on my end of the road. Any discussions, please take them outside to the U R meeting. I would ask you, I'm asking everybody. Not talking here, if you want to talk, please exit the room, you want to finish the rest of our meeting. Thank you, that's, that's I'm really asking that, discussions go on here.
I know, I'm just looking to find out for information.
Then you can contact the building office.
What's that?
You can contact the building office.
It's just finding out where whether your appraisals were done.
We want to, I'll talk to you later. We're working to when you shut people down. I'm going to, I go, I do seven, eight, nine, ten, commission open discussion. Nothing I wanted to say there, the audience of citizens, anything anyone would like to bring up? Okay, then I do want to go briefly into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, who will be invited into executive session?
It would be yourself, John, our counsel, I would ask Josh Leav.
So I will, I will be down in the building office and I would just ask John to keep track of the time that the man should return and who makes it.
Sure, Josh, I would ask you before you go, make sure everyone else is ejected off of, off of the meeting.
Okay, so
For me.
Yeah, exactly.
So everyone who is
Yeah, can someone kick me out because I can't figure out how to get out, I'm sorry.
I think we need to actually stop the
You want to stop the recording?
There will be no further business after.
There'll be no further business.
Actually, Josh, if you want, Josh, if you want, you can just make me the 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 meeting manager, the the host.
Okay, I will make, I will make John.
So maybe Bob Powell is in the meeting also.
Yeah. Nice.
Yes, so John is host, almost everyone is, has left.
You guys, if you could close them out. I think John has to do it now, then.
Yeah.
John, I think you need to close out, moving everyone out of the meeting.
I'm, yeah, I'm doing that now.
Yeah.
Okay. Phone number, is Connie part of?
No, she's not part of this.
All right, Connie, we're we're booting you also.
Bye, Connie. So I would just ask John to keep track.
When we're done.
We'll keep track of the time.